First.
Yeah. Drinks first, Jane.
You're good. Well, we'll give you a break here. Okay, it being six o'clock, I'll call to order the September. Meeting of the planning board here at Town Hall. And I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self. Here. Michael York.
Yeah.
Jane Johnson.
Yeah.
Michael Day will not be here. Brandon Self will not be here. Richard Lane.
Here.
So select this rep, Ken Colby.
Yes.
And Steve Malone.
Yes.
Okay, and I will seat Steve for, uh, from Michael. Okay, our agenda this evening is, um. We have under applications for public hearings, planning board number two, two dash zero, one, eight, site plan review. Mark Bannon of Bannon Engineering has submitted a site plan review application on behalf of Frog Brewing to construct a brewery and taproom on Service Propping Road. The subject property is shown at tax map fifty-six lot three and is located in the business district. Upon finding that the application meets the submission requirements, the board will vote to accept the application as complete and a public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for a date and time certain. Under other business, we have the planning board alternate member application, Brian Vertigo. And the zoning ordinance amendments for twenty twenty-three, just a preliminary discussion on that. Rules of procedure amendments, uh, site and review regulations, uh, we need to set a date for a public hearing and any other business as may be required. So first off, uh, we need to review the minutes for September eighth and there's. Anyone who has anything to add. Okay, motion by Jane to accept the minutes as presented as our second.
Second.
Second added by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor and to get to say hi.
Hi.
All opposed, all opposed.
I would say.
And you're up standing because you're in here, okay. Now, uh, regional impact vote, we need that. To make sure that nothing on tonight's agenda has regional impact, meaning that we have to notify surrounding towns if it's a great impact, so.
I'll move that there's nothing on tonight's agenda that requires a uh, regional impact statement.
Okay, motion by Michael York that we, uh, nothing here on tonight's agenda requires us to notify surrounding towns, is there a second?
Sure.
Let's see, yeah. Ben can say, can be you, so second by Ken, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor and looking at this, say I.
Alright.
Those both. Okay, we brings us to our first application and this is the application again for the site plan review for Frog Brewing Company. And are already written for the record, so I don't need to read it again. And right now, we're going to decide whether the application is complete, so, uh, who is presenting the application, uh, any of you?
Is this okay to sit over here?
It's fine, sure, it's fine to sit there and we're just, we're just doing right now and just run down the list of, uh, items you have in the application from our checklist, uh, make that as complete and then we'll decide whether to complete or not and whether we're going to public hearing.
My name is Mark Cannon. I submitted the application behind Frog Brewing. I have any questions? Also answering questions.
Okay, let's have a look then, so. Just run down, you aren't asking for any waivers on the class submission checklist, I've noticed.
I don't believe so.
Nothing on there, no waivers on there. So, the, the board looked over the application in the drawings, I just looked them over a while and then over.
I have two large copies of anybody's.
We're just making sure that you have everything on the plat that we need to, uh, present, I mean, to your application. See the North Arrow.
It's over there.
Is it on me?
Yeah.
Right there, okay. He hit it down there.
Give me a please.
Other ones are on there by the looks, yep. Butters are on here, this is the features and this is landing two hundred feet of the site. Bombing line, the lot. So, aren't any.
It's, it's, uh, town water.
No, no, there'll be a well. That purple thing right there.
And in the seventy-five foot radius is where.
That's this, that's this big, uh.
Okay, I'm looking at, I'm looking.
Get one of those big ones out, we got some of the business up here. Might be looking at this. Probably no road, it's property, there's access right there. There. Light, light, it's light and glare. It's light down here. Water supply and there. Drainage patterns there. No existing system, there's a new system. Get your, that was, which is post system against. Both on site, well, you're on seventy-five of this. Also like that, I'm sure, I don't know that, yeah, there is sauce for everything, I know it's. Saw it on the.
That's right.
I saw it in the packet, anyways, okay, well, that's there. Both Stephen's day restrictions and covenants, I guess there aren't any on here.
Copy of the deed. We're not allowed to reproduce that in the packet. So I don't.
Okay, good, good to know, and architectural plans, they're right here. Okay. So. To me, it looks like it's complete, about the rest of the board, they missing anything? If not. A minute to look it over and look at there.
We have a, this is now about fifteen foot step back. Into the new.
From which is that? The setbacks are setbacks are all listed right there. Showing.
Yeah, so that's because prior, it was seventy-five, correct?
Um, setbacks from wetlands or, or the shorelands, because we've got the shoreline protection. Too unputted, those show all the setbacks. You know, we're, right now, we're just seeing whether shows setbacks on there, we can get to whether they're close enough or too far away or something, if we deem it as complete, then start the public hearing. There by the looks of it, so, uh. It's more decently than we need and a, a motion stating so, that the application is complete enough to go to public hearing.
Did the application's complete?
Okay, motion by Steve that the application is complete, ready to a public hearing, is there a second? Seconded by Ken, that's. Seconded by Ken, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying hi.
Hi.
Supposed. Okay, application is complete. And unless anyone sees reason why I shouldn't open up the public hearing, you know. No objections, then, okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing and I can do your presentation, just explain to us what you're doing now and, okay, anything that.
It's best way to do this, uh, I don't want to point.
You want to point thing, well, point right on the table, I think, pretty much. I don't know, Barbara, you can come up. You've seen it all, okay.
I don't, um. Wait, are you the rivers?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, um. Is everybody familiar with the site and where it is? Okay. Just want to make sure, so just to organize everybody. Obviously, the river is in the back of the property and this would be the ten on this side here. And the gas companies, energy companies, uh, the properties across the street. And, um, what were proposed? Need a sheet, I got. No, I brought them, so, let's use. Like for space.
Then we don't have.
If there are more. If there are more, we probably would have to do something like.
Alright, so it's a fairly flat, surrounded around.
Yeah, that's good.
It's a, it's a fairly flat site, um, along a roadway and if you picture the site, uh, it kind of slopes gently towards the river, and this, right now, it's just a grass, uh, low field. Uh, with a tree line along the river. Um. Adjacent to the property, which would be on the west side, is, uh, a pound fireland that goes down to a river access. And there is a small trail, uh, shown on the site plan that goes down to the river access as well. And, uh. So it's kind of the surrounding, there's, uh, residential home here and here, so this would be the, uh, northeast corner of the property. And what we're proposing is, um, a, a modest sized building, I think, for the, uh. These are actors, showing the neighbors' houses, so you can see the scale of the project, uh, in the proposed construction is, is, um, modest comparable to the other structures in the, uh, area. The building height is about fifteen feet with a cupola on top. Um, that is shown on, uh, the architect touch, so. So total height, including that cupola is eighteen feet. Um, the rear portion of the building will be a covered patio, right? Um, and indoors, uh, there'll be seating on the west side of the, um, those in, internal building. And on the, um, east side of the building, that's for the brewery. And the brewing will take place. Also, um, looking on the east side of the building into the parking lot, there's a proposed, uh, food truck area, that might have a food truck there. Um, sort of food, that'll be the source of food, there won't be any, uh, cooking or anything inside the building. Um, and then, um, on the east side of the building, there's parking for, I think there's, uh, there are numbered. Twenty, twenty-three gardens. Uh, the surface material of the parking lot is a crushed, crushed stone, a crushed slate, or some people call stain that, gray that. Art pack. Got a million names. Um. And at the end of the parking lot, there'll be a covered, um, an enclosed dumpster area. And there'll be a one light shown on that. Uh, there'll be landscaping on this corner, uh, this existing wood line, which is fairly dense and maintains good separation from the residents here. Uh, but we want to add more, uh, landscaping in this corner towards our residence. Uh, also, at the end of your package, there's some lighting, um, cut sheets. So there'll be, um. I think everybody's familiar with barn lightings. Goose, goose neck barn lighting. And there'll be downcast, uh, building here. And also, this is, uh, bar, like, goose up here, and perhaps one at that side. Um, in the covered patio, there'll be, um, scotch lights. Built into the, uh, ceiling area. Um. Other permits that this has received, um, it did receive a special exception from the town uh, for the brewery aspect of locating this location, uh, we just received, um, the shoreline permit. Uh, so that's our, ready, complete. And I've talked over the waste water systems with the state reviewers, they're comfortable with it. Um, I just was waiting for the shoreline permit before I see this. We expanded, I don't know, sixteen test pits out, out there, um, it's all sandy soil, very good soil, um. So what else can I tell you about? How about your, uh, state highway, uh, I, from it. So that's already the issue. Um. It was issued prior to Saturday, but actually.
Did you talk about the septic, oh, sorry, Jamie.
No, are you saying you have your permit from the O P?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, yeah, that was issued before I.
Thank you. Right.
Yeah, would you talk about the subjects and, and, sounds like, uh, sure, interesting thing to hear about.
Sure. So, um. You know, brewery waste has a lot of, uh, a lot of sugar, a lot of carbon, and so it is considered a high strength waste, um. And I've designed quite a few brewery projects, uh, over the last ten years or so. So what we try to do is pollution prevention inside the building that is managed by the brew, brewing process itself. So. We have two folding tanks inside the building. Uh, um, fairly good size, they're three hundred gallons piece.
In ground or.
They'll, they'll be inside the building, uh, clear plastic, um, vessels, there'll be two, so that the brewery waste goes into, uh, those two internal tanks. Um, the, uh, hops and other, uh, dried yeast and things like that components are pulled out there as pollution prevention and those go to local farms, um, for sustainable, um, agriculture.
That's where the spent grains are too.
Spent grains, yeah, yeah, those are sent, uh, to local, uh, agricultural, um, facilities. So that waste, uh, in, internal, by using those internal tanks, the, uh, the waste water. The wastewater is tempered, uh, in temperature and in, um, solids are settled out and are pulled off and then it flows to an in-ground septic tank number one. Excuse me.
Alright, that's alright.
It flows to septic tank number one. Um, in that, at that location, it will be combined with the, um, taproom, uh, domestic bathroom waste. Um, so that goes into, uh, septic tank number one.
There, it's a regular, what's, a thousand gallon tank.
It's fifteen hundred gallon tank.
Yep.
Cement tank. Cement tank in ground, you won't see it, um. And then that'll flow over to, uh, the second, uh, septic tank, again, fifteen hundred gallons. That will have a, uh, what's called outlet filter uh, on the end of that to further, uh, maintain the integrity of the.
So the idea is to settle, double settle out solids, sell out more solids in this one and then.
So there's four tanks, settling out solids, there's two internal side, and then, uh, two external, um. So. By doing two tanks, not one big tank, you actually get better set. A better treatment, so, um, septic tanks called septic because it's anaerobic environment, septic environment. So that's reducing the, um, the bacteria and, uh, in the waste stream and then it flows to, uh, commonly called leach field or effluent disposal area in the Hampshire state terms. And that field will be, uh, what they call an advanced enviros septic, which are, if you're not familiar with it, they're pretty common these days, but there are twelve inch round pipes wrapped in fabric, um. And, uh, by having them twelve inch, the effluent flows into the each pipe, because there's air in there, and it's dead. Um. You receive aerobic digestion, so septic tanks do anaerobic to break down the waste, then it goes into the, um, leach field and that will be an aerobic environment, so further breaks down waste and then it's discharged. Into the soil.
So is, is that, is it stone packed around those twelve inch pipes you're talking about?
No.
Or.
It, it's what's called concrete sand or, uh, washed sand, so it, it's the fines are removed, so it's a, it's a very coarse sand.
So it retains water, a level of water in those pipes to do the digestion for aerobics?
Um. Not so much, you know, the, the waters that enters those pipes, then because of the size, uh, it, there's air in there.
Mm-hmm.
And the introduction of going from the septic tanks, which are anaerobic septic, uh, no air to an airy environment that, that, um, creates an environment where the aerobic portion of the waste is broken down.
So the water still, um, it, uh, it seeps through the pipes that are come with fabric and then seeps into the sand.
Yep.
So you're just saying that the aerobic activity takes place in that sand part of it.
Yeah, um, that interface portion of it. You know, that's, that's deep in the weeds where that actually takes place.
So is that any deeper or more shallow than a conventional leach field?
Um.
Conventional's are kind of shallow, they're, they're pretty close to the, since.
Yeah, so this, um, this is basically, uh, but they're one foot diameter pipes and on top, there'll be three inches of sand and three inches of, uh, six inches to the top of that pipe going down and then there's a foot of sand underneath. So it's, it's pretty similar to, I think, a conventional system.
So you, you used them before, I guess, you're saying, and, and how do they do in, in, in your climate, like during the winter, it's not too much aerobic activity going out there in the winter?
Well, no, there is, because the, um, septic tanks, uh, that environment is actually, um.
Well, they're deeper, so.
Well, they're deeper and the hot water comes in and things like that, but also the anaerobic activity does increase the temperature in those tanks, um. They're made in New Hampshire, these virus subjects, uh, they've been made in New Hampshire for fifteen years. They're used quite a bit.
Interesting, I'm probably just posing you on it, because, uh, I'm curious about.
I'd probably design six hundred of these systems using those.
So your design was set for, I'm assuming, the brewery and not necessarily just the domestic water usage.
So you know what's, um.
Getting, what's the flow, you know, the.
The, the flow is, uh, uh, twelve hundred gallons a day. And two hundred of that is the brewery. And it doesn't, yeah, that's shocking, I know, so I was thinking of that, so, um, because it's not a huge brewery. Um, you know, um, it's this number of seats in the bathrooms, it said, actually drives the size of this. I was a little surprised.
Yeah, it is surprising, like two hundred gallons a day from the brewery that you guys are gonna. Yeah, there was, you're at least doubling the amount of water that you're using when you're doing a brew, right?
Yeah, it's about.
Not if you're doing it right. Are you reusing any of the water in there?
You recapture, so the majority of the water used in the brewing process is to actually cool the warp. It's leaving the kettle to the tank. We have, so we recapture that into our brew house, to the hot liquor tank to use for the next brew.
Yep.
So you're. Alex.
I see, yeah, so, yeah, that boosts temperature up a little bit. So, wait, um, any more questions on that, um? No, I guess not, um. So. Just, yeah, on these tanks here, they're accessible easy enough, like, because you're gonna have to, those are probably fairly often.
Yeah, they do have those.
More often than a domestic, I'm talking about, or domestic.
You know, having those two tanks inside the brewing room, um.
I'm sure, yeah, it takes a lot of solids out of there.
Yeah.
Get to that truck there.
You're not, um. You know. But. I'm not gonna say what the frequency is, but that, I don't think it's, you know, maybe once a year, maybe once every year of the year. I don't think, uh.
Sure you'll know when they need.
Yeah, exactly, so I, I did mention that second tank has a, uh, uh, filter screen on the outlet.
Yeah.
Um, that's accessible to clean off or wash off, that, uh, many homes, uh, I think all new septic systems should be designed in Hampshire have to have those and those are save people's leach fields. Um, they're not the most pleasant job to hose off, but. So you've saved.
On this leach field here, and you know, with the pipes there, is there access to either end with pipes to clean those out as well, because you've got them covered in fabric? So is there a way to clean most out, or you don't do that?
No, so there'll be a, um, distribution box.
Typical.
Typical D bar, that will have a, um, covered grade. Um, and that's an important feature.
But through the life of the system, you normally wouldn't be cleaning those. And how many?
Uh.
About thirteen, thirteen.
It's a huge, you, you know, when you see these things on the ground, it's like, wow, that's a big feature. So, at least, I keep my seven.
And you went to this design, I'm thinking because of the, uh, the high, like, uh, B O D type. You know, and they, and they have some of that consists here of the high, you know, chemical food content in there, that's why you want that digestive.
Yeah, and nitrites.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an effective treatment.
Maybe, uh. So you're well there, you're sure you've got enough water there to run that brewery, right? Yes. It probably is, yeah. Sounds about that. And you're gonna use gas for heating there, is that why, I mean, for, for getting up your liquids or?
Oh, all our systems, all electric.
Oh, it's all like.
Let me rethink that, that's an great face.
He's got a secret of the one underground. Yes, press, press the street.
And just with the blow, I mean, uh, look, work flow, are you guys gonna do that? I don't know if you're, but it's drawing it up, but just. Takes over here and so another.
Yeah, maybe, I think there's a cut sheet of the, uh, inside of the building.
And right there.
Table. Tanks are. Brew, brew.
Room is right there and those tanks that you're talking about, the, uh, settling tanks, yeah, on that end right there. And then I'm, I guess, what your brew kettle will be.
Well, I'll still be, I'll show you.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna try to line up. Um, the brew house over here, inside this thing, uh, see with the water, it's really here, they're there. Uh, some of that permitting tanks, the ones we have are small enough, they're all wheels, they're actually all around. What, that floor, that floor drainage, is that what these are? You can have floor drains in there, going into probably a, a little sump area where you can filter it before it goes in your system.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty much just to hose the floor off.
And that way, so. We'll go into those two, uh.
All gets pumped back out of it where you have a.
Um.
Yeah, or a sump area there.
Sump area that'll pump into those two tags and, um, be tempered, there's a garage door here.
Where, where's your storage area for your grains and all that type of stuff? I do have, have right in, in the building.
Yeah.
Any questions from the rest of the board?
Well, it's an interesting process, that's one of the values of these taprooms, as people can see how. Well, it's an interesting process. That's one of the values of these taprooms, as people can see how the beer is made, that's kind of the introduction.
Really hasn't tested that water yet to see what. Barbara, do you have any questions on this?
Have the opportunity to review this.
You were, you were at the CBA meeting.
Oh, yeah. They also.
Yeah, so you're set with them.
You have no plans for like glass fronting across where your brew tanks are or something like that, so people can see that or. Yeah, I see that there's a garage door, but what I'm referring to is street side.
I think you'll come here, any windows in the hallway. We may put a window to. Kind of like when you're driving down the road, you won't be able to get inside the brewery.
Hey, so any other questions from members of the board here? And not too many messages of the public, Barbara.
We have one member.
Oh, we do, okay. Do they have their hand up? They want to ask a question?
She don't change at the moment.
No, I'm still looking. Recommend, I mean, staff recommend it, I'm trying to find that, I know it's in here.
Got one, one window and one door. There it happens, it's a mess.
Because all the breweries, that's gonna be inside the building against that wall.
If you could do it, break that up a little bit.
The plan was to write broad brewing right on the building right there.
You're right down the street from me. But I don't go that way.
This would be street sign.
Yes, yeah.
And that's where you're gonna be doing your, your sign, signage.
I think, yeah, those plan was to do it on the building.
How big?
Only within our restrictions, our sign ordinance, you know, that's how they can do it.
When he said that, I saw that.
Russian hat pink.
Neon.
This is all green frog. Yeah, they'll probably be a frog.
Very appropriate place for frog.
Yes. Just to. Endowish that conversation. On the front side, there is some landscaping and there'll be a split rail fence along the. Line here. No, not showing.
Done the plan. I think the position of your sign is on the.
Yep.
Be at any sign, pre standing. Let's see, just, just running over the application there, it's commercial, special exception granted for the brewery and taproom. Let's see, it's a brewery taproom and. Volume. Route ten, I don't, I see your operation hours be Monday through Thursday. Six. That's a six.
Six to eight.
Okay, that must have missed, must have missed that, because I know I read it in the other application. And Friday, oh, this is six plus, this is cars, because I'm reading the wrong, sorry about that, I'm reading cars, six plus. Monday through Thursday, Friday thirty plus cars, Saturday seventy five plus or minus cars, okay? Yeah, hours right down here. Monday through Friday, eight to four taproom, once a Thursday, three to eight, Friday, Saturday, twelve eight, Sunday, twelve to six. Okay, that's their application and like them, any other questions for the board? If not. Okay, then I will close a public hearing and the board will deliberate. All right. Our deliberations go, I think they got it covered, pretty straightforward to me. Just an operation there, again, we have one in town, not too far away from that. They're doing pretty well.
Where are we? Food truck room from like down in there, do we need to be concerned with that, or is that gonna have to come before us later?
Well, we allow on the other one that. It's, they know what on the plan, the air would be. But we have made the other one come in, if they wanted a food truck, they didn't have one right back, made them spend for a modification site plan. So we probably should call the same thing here, if, if you guys have a food truck there, you just come in for a modification of site plan. And it would be. It's gonna be right there, so.
So we want to make note of that.
We'll need a modification if it's already, if you put the plan as it is, showing it.
The planning board can say that as long as the food truck would be in that area designated on the plan, that it would be okay for the plant, with the plant, but plant could do that. Where it's deployed. You know, they're there and as long as you put it there, and we're finding it.
Well, the idea would be to probably bring power to that location underground. So that's what I'm trying to get it set up, so.
And again, I don't have any objection to it either at all, as long as it's put in any motion that is.
Okay, it's like underground, that's not on there.
Really, yeah, underground cable there. Small matter, to me, it's a small matter, I don't know if it's a small matter or anybody else. I don't know that would make every single person show exactly where every underground cable and stuff is in their plan.
So have we not run into problems where if it's not on the plaque? We have to bring people back in.
If it's not denoted on. And that's for things not necessarily underground. For things. Well, signing, there's things that are visible. Up to the board to decide whether they want on the, the board wants it on there, then it can still be approved.
There's a condition.
With a condition, and it's a small enough condition that I don't think they'd have to come in for a public hearing for it. They just have to show up on the plan for the code enforcement and it could be proved that way. In my opinion.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking of the CYA.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, and that's, and if that might, it has it in the motion, that's a condition, then it's gotta be on that plan. Anything else from anybody?
So all that will be visible from the road will be that. And nothing in front of the building.
Building, whether a tree, trees there.
Yeah.
Fences in front of it.
Right, but I mean. It's some people have in the past had a way of beginning to stack things in front of their buildings.
As far as storage, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, if it doesn't show storage.
No, right, that's what I'm saying.
And there's no.
Right, just wanna mention it.
No, he has a quack, isn't he? Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll see.
Yeah, they'll have a sign and a driveway. In and out and.
Oh, can I call you back?
They will, but old.
Because I've got.
And unused tanks and stack them along. I know where your place is in Marlboro and always looks nice.
Thanks.
Did I misunderstand? Were you planning on putting a sign on the building?
Well, we thought maybe we would somehow paint something to the build.
And as long as it meets our site, I mean, our sign ordinance, then. Yeah, it's our, the land use board, I think approves it now. Like, it doesn't come to the planning board anymore, it comes to the land use board to get the, as long as it meets the criteria of the sign ordinance. Well, if there's nothing else, then a motion would be in order, but that motion would include, assuming in the grounds to the food truck area. And also it should include that as long as they put their food truck in that designated area, then they can have it there. And also, there are some others from staff here. Also that, let's see, they got their shoreline permits, that's not a condition. They got their driveway permit, that's okay, okay, so the freestanding sign at the entrance shall require a sound time permit. Okay, and lighting shall be installed and arranged so as not to cause glare on a burning properties or on adjacent public roadway, which we've always have that in there. A landscape buffer along eastern property line shall be maintained, as I'm seeing, they're showing right there. And the applicant shall obtain a building permit and file approval, enforcement officer and fire department. So those are the other conditions that we're putting, probably shouldn't be putting. So. Especially.
And you, the shoreline permit is.
We've got, no, we've got it. Okay, they brought that in tonight. And they're. Drug it from it. Got that, so again, it would be. The motion, where we're gonna make the motion, well, I'll let them make the motion and we can fill in the lines if there, this is, and there, anybody.
Go ahead, Steve, you want to the motion. So move to state by the chair.
Okay, motion by Steve to approve the site plan with the following conditions, and that would be. Going the underground electrical to the designated area for the food truck. And that if they have a food truck there, it has to be in the designated area. And that the freestanding sign at the entrance shall require a town sign permit. That the lighting shall be installed, and you already have these anyways, you know, till they install, not to cause glare on a burning properties on adjacent public roadway. A landscape buffer along eastern property line shall be maintained. The applicant shall obtain a building permit and final approval from code enforcement officer and fire department. That's okay with you, Steve, those, okay, and the second, wait, the second, second, if I can, is there any further discussion? And under further discussion, I might add that. I don't think any of these conditions would require them to come back in for a compliance hearing, it looks like they're mainly administrative. And once they are dealt with, then the application would be final.
Okay, but just. Making me understand. This part, the important enforcement officer would be able to okay that, let's say, show.
If they've been playing in the plan, this can be registered and filed, it's signed by me. It has that on there, and code enforcement will check that off, and plus the other things on here will be checked off. And that's administrative pretty much, so. It would be final then, okay, then. I guess no further discussion. And all those favorite indicate the same, hi, all those opposed. Okay, and you have your, your side tank approved, and again, you just need to put it on the side, bring it in for the code enforcement, showing that where that on the ground is there. And everything else. Good luck to you.
We'll have a bicycle there, so you can drive a bicycle home.
Want to get that?
You clear ice cream and whatever it was.
Yeah, it's right almost on the corner.
But and they have a. That's probably what he was thinking he might name. Which if he does, it would start bringing names of that thing. It lost everybody. Yeah, yeah.
Couple of memories here.
Well, all, all of them are. Which level?
Prior to COVID, I was three years with the middle school. And then last year, Jim Hill asked me to help him with diversity. So, but I did that last year and then summer league and. Last year was a lot of fun with a really good group of kids. Looks like we're now pretty much another real good. Not as tall as last year, but. We've got some, we've got some strong possibilities.
Well, you don't have.
Oh, it helps.
Yeah, been traced to this in school, they wanted her to be on the basketball team. But she also had a horse that she wanted to take to the. The U, and so she's. He said, we're just doing that because parents. That wasn't true.
Well, I see we have an application for alternate. There's no here. Brian.
Vertigo.
Vertigo. Vertigo, Brian Vertigo, you remember him? I do remember, I got the impression they didn't like us too much. But he's applied for alternate member on the planning board. So he lives right in town, in South Road. Well, nothing wrong with that. Prior experience, none previously, none required. Any other experiences, including planning board meetings, seven to eight, two. Statement describing the interest in serving the town, he says, he says, I wish to serve on the planning board as an alternate member in order to ensure that all proper rules, regulations and requirements are adhered to. As we work to ensure Swansea is able to maintain a balance of development between the town, those in the environment. You can see any professional qualifications, doesn't really need any, but got a P A in economics and service of ten years with the USO. So. There we have it. Need another alternate.
I would make a suggestion that we ask him to come to a couple of meetings. When we're having, you know, like tonight was a good meeting and, and then. A lot of times our meetings are very meaningful and we go all, we all explore over the site plan rules, but I mean. If he, if we ask him to come to give him a number of two or three meetings. Before we write him right in.
He could do that as an, as an alternate though, you know, we don't have too many people knocking down the door.
Well, this is very true, I'm just saying we might like to do that.
I know, I know what you're saying. Why you're saying it too, yeah, we don't really need a hothead on the board.
I, maybe that's why they made me sit through a couple of meetings before I could be an alternate. Quite a few years ago.
The other thing is, we have had a few people become alternates and then we never see them again.
Yeah.
They go to one, there's an engineer.
And that too, yeah, maybe he would find that it, I mean, we've been here now for almost an hour.
Sometimes people don't realize you get in depth, like we've probably got another avenue coming up, okay? Those type of projects take a time to, to deal through.
Those type of projects take a time to deal through.
And not just here.
Yeah, you see, a lot of people out there don't understand, like when that project on Gomals came out, I've heard a lot of feedback, what did you do that? Well, you know, it comes to the public meeting.
Plus, I, I will take responsibility for him putting this in because. He was out in the parking lot and kind of hooked on to me before I got to my car, I had to park way up in the parking lot that night. And I couldn't go in and out, the handicap to my leg was killing me, and so anyway. I wasn't going very fast and he talked for a while and I told him, I said, well, you know. It might be a good idea for you to think about becoming an alternate. Because you will learn a lot about town policy and planning board, board policy and rules. And you have to know those and you have to follow them. So bingo.
Yeah, sometimes you gotta leave your personal feelings about a project out.
Yeah, but you know.
Right in front of your house and you're at a hearing. He was at, he was at a public hearing and he, he had personal feelings, it was all right for him to air his personal feelings, but. He wasn't sitting on the board, but he would learn that, and I think, I think it's interesting that he, he's interested enough to apply.
Lots of those meetings can get emotional, you know, I mean, they're out there and, and again, like, because bringing up too that. They don't attend too many meetings, don't really know how it's going down, so, you know. I don't have an objection to him being on the board, instead of making him go to three meetings before he gets there.
They just don't understand what we have to go through, follow, we have to follow the law.
Before he is sworn in.
He's been to a couple, you know, he's, he's filled the application out. It's a, it's a, you know, you make a motion and we'll vote, have the vote on it and see, we can make a motion if.
Whatever, yeah, I just threw it out there, something to think about it.
Well, I think you should make the motion.
Already did my motioning.
Well, again, you know. Yeah, a little bit of an outburst in that meeting there, but I'm not gonna hold against the guy and all, no.
What, what's interesting is that his, his objection about concern about the landscaping. I went to the area where the parking lot is supposed to be. The only way he can see that parking lot is from an upstairs bedroom or bathroom. He has a fence, he has trees, you know, so that's, that's just a sidelight.
Well, I know that, Borg and table matter, think about it, vote on our next meeting if we want to.
Invite him in.
Do you like to do that?
And he can maybe explain face to face to us what he's thinking.
Well, we're either gonna vote on that, or we're gonna vote to table, one or the other. What are we gonna do? And who's gonna speak up?
I say table, it says that this is my questions.
Ah, I don't know, yeah, that's fine, you wanna make that motion, we table it for the next meeting, and, and maybe he can attend to me and quiz. All right, that sounds like a good motion. Right, that your motion?
Yep.
Table matter until the next meeting and have him come in, and we'll vote on it then. Sounds like that's Steve's motion. Second, second by Richard, is there any further discussion? All in favor, you can say, hi, hi, all opposed, good, we'll have him in, if you can make it next minute. So, let's see, zoning ordinance amendments for twenty twenty-three. And.
Oh, I forgot to print a letter to go along with this. Would you guys like me to print it and throw it at you or summarize it?
Summarize it.
It's from Paul Thomas, who owns Twinkle Town, and he, he came in and had a meeting with me. And also wrote a letter to support the first two items on the list, changing wetland setbacks for septic. To match state regulations and to revisit the front setback requirements on Route ten and Route twelve. And maybe, he was talking about considering what the ordinance used to be. Which was seventy-five feet back or in line. And I'm not saying that that's the right direction to go in, but that's what he was advocating for at this time.
Okay.
So, there it is.
The, the whole seventy-five foot thing was put in there on those two corridors. Because of future possible expansions of those roads, whether they get expanded or not, but that's, that's what that was in there for, so. There would be room without taking somebody building down to widen those roads through there. So, whether it needs to be in there or not, who knows?
Yeah, and on that one, I did speak with D O T a little bit to get a sense of where the right of way lies on those roads. And Route twelve is very complicated, you know, down by Papagallo's, it's thirty-three feet on the center line. And then it's sort of a patchwork quilt, and in some places, it's seventy-five feet from the center line, and it's.
That's due to probably the buildings being so close.
Yeah, so it's, it's gonna be a complicated conversation if that's a topic that you guys decide you want to visit this year.
All right, so those two there, we have someone writing a letter in his favor of those two. Next one would be a sole ordinance, might be a bit lengthy, but we could think about that. Let's see, the other was special exception structures over a thousand square feet, residents, rural agricultural district. And administrative, David, what's that mean?
Um, right now, if somebody wants to build a shed or a garage over a thousand square feet. They have to come to the zoning board for a special exception for that. So, and I think it's to prevent certain types of uses in certain areas, and so the code enforcement officer. Has recommended that we do an administrative affidavit of use, so if somebody comes in applying for a building permit. For say, a garage that's fifteen hundred square feet. The owner of that future structure would sign an affidavit of what the proposed use is for the structure.
So if I wanted to put a, writing a, on my property. It's over a thousand square feet and I have to come down, you know, special exception.
Right now, you would absolutely. There's no way you could fit that under a thousand square feet.
No, you could. It's just a thought we've had.
Yeah, and so.
I can see other people in the rural agriculture that have farms, doing something like that barn.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna build a barn unless it's a thousand square feet down.
Yeah.
But, yeah, this is, that, kinda making more streamlined than them to come in and administratively do it practically.
And there could be more parameters on it, so that, you know, certain uses are excluded from that.
So, the affidavit of use, though. Would kind of have to be filed with, with the registry of deeds. On the plat, because the property could change ownership, and then the affidavit would not. Yeah, the affidavit would be in the property owner go, wouldn't be registered in the registry of deeds, I wouldn't think, so that affidavit of use. Kind of have to be, in my opinion anyways, registered with the registry of deeds, so that would be that use and stay.
Would we want the list of uses that could be special attention?
I don't think it's a good idea to, to do that, to have to tie.
I say that is to find my, have my property somehow, the prior owner, not a commercial repair garage. Put in the middle of a rural agricultural.
And.
And that's nineteen hundred square feet. But the point is, right now, if, whatever, you could do that. Without having an approved use, if I wanted to put a garage in and repair cars, I could do it.
Well, because that went with the land, yeah.
No, I, I fixed my property, but I don't know if the same other properties, because what I did is I come down to the town and I said, I don't want a commercial piece of property. That acre land is no longer commercial or not, it's because, so I'm not gonna use it as commercials. If we were right back for culture, but I'm just wondering if there's other places in town that are rural agricultural, would that could happen?
Where it could happen under what, a variance, you mean?
Variance or.
Well, regardless of this, whether it's in or out, variance still can occur. They, right now, they have to come in for a special exception, I guess, we're talking about right for the over a thousand. I think that's, in my opinion, I think that's a good way to keep it there, and each one can be looked at separately and.
I'm, I'm being devil's advocate.
Yeah.
She's still listing things, sure enough, whatever the most objectionable thing is that somebody can think of. It's not gonna be on that list.
Yeah.
Well, it would be a list of permitted uses.
Right.
And so if it's not on the list, they would have to come in.
Correct.
Would be how, how the ordinance currently works. In other, in other places.
I don't know, I think we oughta maybe leave that alone. For now, that's only me, though, you know, we got a whole board here. Let's see, the next one, update zoning ordinance, floodplain district specifies FEMA firm date nineteen eighty-one. What's the iteration, what's the modern iteration to the date?
Yeah, I, or just, you know, have it be more generic rather than nineteen eighty-one. Say current FEMA firm.
Yeah, and that would, that's a simple one, so let's. Consider that one, then, that's the, right. Let's see, update zoning for eleven B, add language reflect changes in height of the structure. And. Yes, and that's, again, that's just a wording thing, I think we could consider that one, too.
Well, that one, I should explain to you what eleven B is, if you don't know off the top of your head. This is for non-conforming structures, and right now, we have one section that allows. The rebuild of a non-conforming structure in the same footprint and cubic size. Cubic area, volume, whatever, then we have another section that allows you to. Expand a non-conforming structure up to half the distance of the setback. Or something, and it's a little bit confusing, but in one place, it doesn't allow you to expand at all. And so if you tear down your cottage on Wilson Pond, or it burns down or whatever. And you want to try to rebuild the same structure, you actually can't do that and be compliant with code on a lot of these properties. Because the ceiling height is too low, which is why I think. I'm not sure what the solution is yet, so I could investigate it if you guys are interested in this one. But it's restrictive in a way where folks have to come to get a variance to rebuild a house, to. Insulate it, modernize it, age in place, all of those things.
And you're, you're talking about the height wise, ceiling height wise, in regards to cubic feet of the house? So, yeah, they can't expand it over the same cubic feet that house was there, so, yeah, so they.
Yeah, so if it's like a, a one and a half story house.
It has to remain that way if they rebuild it. So, we're thinking about putting in, so it does say, it says restoration, reconstruction, alteration and or replacement. Of non-conforming building structures are allowed, provided that the cubic footage and the footprint of the original building structure stays the same or smaller. And non-conforming building structures that have been destroyed in whole and part by fire, or another natural disasters, or by voluntary demolition, maybe replaced. Within one year of the damage or demolition with the same or smaller footprint. And with the same, a smaller cubic footage, so if we were to change that, then up in the beginning where it says restoration, reconstruction, alteration. Replacement of non-conforming building structures are allowed, provided that. The height, cubic footage and footprint, so that word height could be added in right there, then if we're gonna go with by. It's the same, so no, that's so unfair, if it's the height problem, out there.
When you say height, I think. Ground level up to the peak of the house.
Yeah.
When, what you were speaking of, I think, was, okay, you're tall, I'm small. I don't need as much space above me as you do.
Yeah, and what I'm referring to more specifically is what is code for the minimum interior ceiling height. Exactly, and, you know, if some of these cottages have very low ceilings, I'm sure you all are familiar with this. And so when a rebuild needs to happen, it's, it's impossible to do it within those parameters. Even if you are trying to actually maintain like a one and a half story cottage with this footprint. Becomes a one and a half story cottage with this footprint, but it winds up getting a little bit taller, and that's where, right now, a person would need a variance to do that. And, and that may be fine, I mean, if you guys wanna keep it that way, but there may be a solution to just incorporate language that accommodates. Building the same structure to code.
You know, I was gonna say, you know, with a lot of those structures are two by four. Most of them, and they may have, you know, some fiberglass, but maybe rock wool or whatever. And to rebuild to code, you're gonna have to put two by six in there. And so I think if we allowed them to build on the same footprint, but to go higher. To, in order to satisfy today's codes for structure and insulation. But, you know, that's where we should probably go.
Yep, I think you're right, that'll, I think we should look that over a little bit more than.
And since we're gonna look it over more, I wanna bring your attention to the one at the top of the page, opposite.
This one here.
I'm pretty sure that's the one, my binder here.
It says, in no case shall the expansion be closer to a property line or right of way than one half of any setback distance requirement. For the zoning district that the property is located in.
Oh, read the clause before it, that introduces what it's talking about, I'm sorry.
Okay, existing legally non-conforming buildings or structures that have non-conforming setbacks. Maybe enlarged or changed, but if that the expansion does not further approach into a setback, subject to the following, you know, that would see.
So, those two kind of conflict with each other, because one is sort of saying you can't make it bigger, and the next is saying, wait, you can make it bigger. You just can't encroach more than a certain amount.
Yep, it is.
So it's a little bit, again, I don't quite have the solution, I figured it'd bring it to your attention, and maybe we could work on it.
So, section ten, we will look through that whole section, some point, whether we actually put on the warrant or not. You know, I think we, yeah, good idea, we should look into that. See, add definitions, we're lacking for all use, all uses that are committed by right and special exception. But again, that'll add more looking into whether we get to it this year or not, who knows, but it's a good thing to, to make sure all those definitions are in there. And see, home occupation not allowed by right in all districts as stated, then one way or the other, not to include. Industrial Park, yes, industrial park zone, it's also not included in the village business two district either. And it also says, see, permits required, the language should reflect this or omit permit for this use. So. I don't, I, I would say that we, because this is home occupation, which means that. The innocent bystander walking by the house would have no idea that a business is going on inside a house, because. You know, it's just so low key, small, and that's why we made it a right. In every zone, we thought we did in every zone, you could have a public, I mean. Home occupation error, get out of that, home occupation in the house, so. I think we oughta just add it into industrial park and village, village business too, and maybe do that this year, that's a small addition there. And also.
That would be in the flat thing.
Yeah.
Where they have, so building side for. Computer work and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Which one is that, we're just talking about?
Plant lease is in the industrial park, and now people will be living in the industrial park zone, so it accommodates.
So, we have, let's see, under your home occupations and home base businesses, as home occupations are allowed by right. All districts with no site plan review requirement, provided that the criteria below are met, and it just tells about home occupation, so. Let's, let me just get through this first, and I'll read down those. We're talking about, it doesn't say anything about whether a permit is required or not required, that's what we're talking about here as well.
Yeah, because we do have a permit, but nobody comes in for permits, because it's not clear that it's necessary.
The intent was that they didn't need a permit for it, because there was nothing about the place that you could tell, and it was going on, nothing gonna bother the surrounding neighborhood at all. So that was the intent, apparently we didn't put it in there.
Should we get rid of the permit?
To get rid of the permit, but we need to add it in, you're correct, we need to add it into the site plan to make it clear one way or the other. Because the home base business does need site plan permit there. So, in that, where it says, number one, home occupations are allowed by right in all districts with no. Then we can say, add permit or after that, so we'll read like this, home occupations are allowed by right in all districts with no permit or site plan review requirement. Provided that criteria below are met. We added those two words in there. Right after the, no permit, or going right after there, maybe there, and I can come in later, I have somebody written in my book.
Okay, good.
We have other stuff we're gonna go over tonight, and I'll probably have to come in.
I have a problem. Board term of home occupation.
Let me just read down what you wanted to know about that, so that's about the home occupations, as long as these criteria are met. Says, home occupation shall only be conducted by an inhabitant of dwelling. The home occupation shall not utilize an area more than three hundred square feet in the dwelling or accessory structure. There shall be no visible, audible or odor evidence of the home occupation activity and the use shall not cause any pollutants to enter the sewer system. Examples of home occupation include, but are not limited to computer related activities such as software design, webpage design and internet sales, home offices, artists and craft people. That's what the intent of that part of the home occupation is for.
Okay. A real good baker. And can I open up a bakery as a home occupation in my house?
Well, if it's, if you don't use over three hundred square feet, if no one can smell your cooking outside, because you're talking about odor out there. It falls under that criteria, you could, but you'd probably fall under home based business because you're probably gonna be selling the stuff out of there, right? As far as charter, trucking out or something like that, because we do have the home based business as well. And that's, that's a home based occupation, but it's, it's a little bit more with trucks and things like that and you have to come in for.
Well, it's also a little more dangerous with yeast. A lot more dangerous.
Did not know that.
Well, yeah.
With what?
But with three hundred square feet, would you have an oven big enough to make that a danger?
I don't know because I'm not a cook.
I wouldn't think you.
But if somebody were gonna do that.
Proposing it?
No, I'm just, I'm asking. I think that's the question, guys. Let's get on to the next subject.
Okay, let's get on the next subject. Done with that one? Let's see, that, so. Next one is omit in area that is exempt from the building permit requirements from three C, I got three C three.
There's nothing that's exempt from building permit requirements in that statement. So it's it gives people this false sense of I don't need a permit.
There are state permits on commercial dealing, you know, if like Steve's talking about, there's state permits that.
Yeah. Because it reads for residential properties, one single story storage shed up to two hundred square feet in area that is exempt from the building permit requirements may be located up to five feet from the side or rear property lines, but must comply with the front setback requirements. So if that were changed to read like this, the residence, residential properties, one single story storage shed not to exceed two hundred square feet in area shall be exempt from the building permit requirements and maybe locate up to five feet from the side part of the lines, because we do exempt those.
Um, they still have to get a building permit.
For the two hundred square feet?
Yeah.
They do.
They don't have to pay for it, but they still have to get the permit.
So that's not in there at all. So it says, so we need to take the exempt out of there.
Or so Mike tells me.
Unless the planning board says that they don't need it for something to our, always assume that he didn't need it. He could just two hundred small little square foot storage shed on your property without coming to the town. You know anything about that?
I know a lot of people have no chance
Yeah.
on their property and most of them put them more than five feet away from their house. And most of them are not up in front of their house. I can only think one that is. And I, I think it's terrible that they put that right in front of their house. I don't know why anybody did that. Maybe they think key storage sheds are pretty.
That that is exempt from the permit process. I don't, Mike isn't here to quiz him about it, but anything in our zoning, if it states in our, in our zoning, that's the purpose. We have it in there. That, that's what the people voted on. That's the law. And if it says to shed up to two hundred square feet in, in an area that is exempt from the building permit requirements. I think it's saying that that's exempt from the building requirements. We need to talk to Mike about that, I guess.
Okay, from the side or rear.
Well, they're talking about setbacks, but they're, they're, they're saying that that building, which is two hundred square feet is exempt from the permit requirements, but they're talking about setbacks. But again, if it says it's exempt from the building permit requirements and we're making them get a permit, then they could continue with this and say, well, you know, zoning ordinance, what do you make if they get a permit? So you gotta either take it out or just stop letting them get a permit.
Well, if you're gonna tell them where they can put it, I think you should take out the parts that they don't need a permit. Otherwise, how do you know where they're gonna put the bill?
Good point. To take that out, we gotta have it go to the town and have them both take it out. We can't just.
I think.
That's why this one's on.
I think it's in there because, because other, if it weren't in there, you wouldn't know. They could stick a little building anywhere. Some people do anyways.
But what we're talking about here is if it's, if it's exempt from the permit process and they don't come in for the, you're saying that how are you gonna know where they put it?
Yeah.
And you just said we need to take that out of there.
No, I said we just leave it like it is.
Leave it as it is. And again, leaving it as it is means that they aren't coming in. You aren't gonna know where it is. Your neighbor might know where it is and you might say.
Doesn't it say they have to have a permit?
No.
I haven't had my dinner and I'm darn tired.
And if they don't get a permit for it, it doesn't trigger any changes in the tax assessment.
So we'll have to leave that one alone or think about changing that one. We can still think of this is just preliminary, the list going on. We can think about that one, I suppose. Uh, next one is add utility generation as a use by right or special exception in more districts. And that has to do with the master plan, one of the objectives there.
This was really specifically intended towards things like solar and other
Yeah.
types of things.
It was, yeah, so real solar, also, right, that type of stuff.
I think roof solar you can do in any district because it's an accessory use. But if another solar array were to come into town, we could make it so that could exist somewhere without a variance. Whereas right now it can only exist where the mill property is and there's no room for one right there. But then they would need a variance.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll have to talk about that one when it comes to zoning too, because we couldn't take a look at the zoning and but that as an allowable use or special exception of one of the other zones. Last one is rezone of tax map sixteen lot one, and that was that woman that was in here, I think about.
Yeah, too.
Yeah. So, and we told her we'd put it on and we probably should, by our word, just discuss it, the hearings next spring.
No question. Are we going to limit the amount of zoning changes on the ballot this year?
We should, we always, you know, because it's too confusing, you know.
It is, it's a lot there.
Don't know.
People get tired.
We'll do that and start discussing, I'm against some public hearing stuff, but yeah.
Which ones we feel that are most important.
And, and keep it a little simpler than it was last year. But there's, I guess. One more thing.
Oh, and there was a recommendation, and I don't think this needs to be a ballot measure to start the zoning ordinance on page one, like to start the whole document on page one rather than having the Roman numeral three pages for the table of contents and such, so that when you're scrolling through the PDF.
Oh, it comes out.
Can find it. Had a recommendation for it. I don't know if I need to ask you guys if I can do that or if I could just sneak it in and reformatting, but I don't really wanna sneak it in since it's your document.
I don't see it right now. It had to do with density. See.
Which district?
Yeah, we're talking about residential district and it says, it says under in addition, this is special exception stuff, but two family dwelling, the density requirements for a two family dwelling shall be one and a half acres unless connected to a public sewer, but we never say what the density is when it's connected to a public sewer.
Well, yeah, it should, I was noticing that too. And, but it's a two family dwelling, so it won't. Maybe it means you need less acreage. So is that where you're going with that?
What it means, that's.
But the minimum acreage for the district is one acre, correct?
Oh, yes.
So is it just implied, just connected to public sewer that you can?
Only one acre or more. I guess it would be implied. Yeah.
I'm not sure. So I'm just, I think that's why I didn't put it on the list because initially I had that on the list and then I was like.
Let's leave that one.
There's a couple places where two family, it, it has similar language and.
It is. Yeah, I know we fixed one of them or did something with one of them. Maybe it was even last year and all that's only we did. But, um, but yeah, that was just one thing I had noted down here. But yeah, you're right. That if it's one acre in that zone, then you can't go lower than that anymore without a parents. All right. See.
Do you guys want me to read back the six? Cause it looks like we're going to maybe discuss a little further.
Sure.
Not tonight.
Sure.
Yeah. Update the floodplain district to specify a up to date FEMA firm map. Update section eleven B, adding language to reflect changes in the structure, a kind of a structure, sorry. Home occupation not allowed by right in all districts, change that. Revisit the shed building permit situation. Add utility generation as a use by rate or special exception in more districts and rezoning of map sixteen lot one has entirely within the business district.
Yep.
And we wanna scrap the setbacks for subjects and the ten and twelve for this year.
When we start talking about zoning, I think we still should talk about it, just in case we wanna do something with that one and maybe not some of the other, might be dropping some of these other ones or not, but we probably shouldn't think about that one. That setbacks, the other, both of those setbacks, the one twenty-five foot one for the subject systems stayed on, as we know, only seventy-five feet and the seventy-five foot setback on ten, twelve. I think we should discuss those anyway.
We should discuss it because is there any ramifications that help if you change that setback for subjects?
Yeah. It doesn't seem that there is because the state requirements seventy-five foot.
The state doesn't always write things that are.
They don't, but it's been that way for a long time. I think we'd be knowing about it first, hearing something about it, or they don't change it by now. If it did post, I'm sorry, the problem. It's that way because Constitution Commission.
Well, so maybe I should just say, let's look at what we're gonna scrap and not discuss again this year. The solar ordinance and the giant sheds with the affidavit of use. And adding a ton of definitions.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a good leaving all.
Okay.
Good. So we've got our agenda for.
We are gonna discuss. We got three off the list, so that's progress.
And we have rules of procedure amendments.
Yeah, sorry to spring this on you guys, but it occurred to me that we do need to update them to reflect the new law. And then I started combing through and just finding little snippets that almost fall in the category of typos.
And this is in our rules of procedure or site plan review regulations or both?
Rules of procedure.
Okay.
Exclusive.
So we have this listed in our rules of procedure and our site plan. Or we don't?
I'm, I can't speak to that. I don't, I don't remember.
I think, I think a lot of this is in the site plan rights too, but in our, in our rules of procedure, these we have to like we have to change because of changes in state laws, correct?
Yes.
This is, so then we need to extend that the selectmen can give can no longer be given, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I think that's inside my legs. So I want to change that.
And in the moment, you know, the law has already, it's already begun, but as long as we're observing it, you know, you guys don't wanna get into the weeds of this tonight. We don't have to, as long as we're following the rules, we don't have to have them written down perfectly yet.
All right.
Cause we can hold these guys to fire on anything that we don't think they did right. But we can't go to the state level that much in call this.
What are you talking about legislature, you mean, or what?
Well, not legislation so much the governor, because the governor, the will right now, the one we have sometimes will overrule what the legislature says, basically, maybe what, since you don't have a veto proof legislator, either way, he gets his way.
Yeah, we can't do much about that.
See, when these guys make a decision that the town does not like, you can hold them to the fire by voting them out of office, right? So you have to consider what the town wants to be versus the state doesn't have to do that so much. You could say they can, but you know, when you're voting for governor, we, we may be mad at Swansea, but everybody else in the world loves it.
But that doesn't apply to these, does it? Or is it somehow you're, you're turning around to applying to these?
I think everything that the state mandates, it takes away from local government position. Less local control.
Yeah, you're, you're right about that. Yeah, you're right.
I'm off the local control.
Yep, so am I. So, yeah, we can maybe read over these and look them over a little bit more. So brings us to site plan review regulations. Now, if, if we're gonna, we haven't done those quite a while, the regs, site plan review, and there's, there is some of the stuff in these rules here that are in our site rights. And I've been going through them as I have over the years and putting notation, you know, front of mind is all written up with notations, but got a bunch of stuff in here that, that probably, and if the board allows me to do it, just get together with Sarah sometime and go over it and maybe reorganize some of it, maybe change them around, and then we can get to discussing it before we have a public hearing. That's up to the board. Want to do that or just do the whole thing here at the table? Either way, it has to do with some things about organize, organizational part of it. For instance, yeah, for like, we've got the typical Roman numerals, five, six, then seven, then suddenly adjusted numbers over here. Seven oh one and seven oh two, seven oh five, seven oh six. That's it's too confusing. That's not correct. Now, we need to, we need to put that proper as it should be, you know, sticking with the regular order of, of things like that. And also we, we go for like, you know, we're talking about conditional approval of rules and we had that whole thing about conditional approval and, and appropriate conditions. And we need to, to clarify that. And I've got some wording that I've, you know, said in here before about that, that maybe I can get together with you, Sarah, about, talk about. And put it down for some for the board to read. And also taking some things like, you know, we're talking about approvals, public hearing notices. And then you go way back here, I think it is. And you go way back to page, that jumps from page eighteen to page seventeen, and then you get the section on approval. So we need to move that over to where we're talking about conditional approvals, public hearings, notices and all that type of stuff. So get it as it flows the way the meetings go, in these go, you know, preliminary design and all that type of stuff. Need to flow this, I think the same way of doing our meetings, if we can easily do that, with this stuff around maybe in there. So yeah, if the board has no objection, I'll get together with Sarah sometime and, and we can reorganize it, then we can all get together and read this stuff out. If it makes sense, we can just have a public hearing and do the whole thing at once. You know, we can incorporate some of these rules in here into that, because I know some of those are in our site.
Yeah, and maybe we could have both of those hearings on the same night.
I do them both. Good idea.
Knock them out.
That, yeah, I can write down there as I say. And the one about, um. We also, we had this one that we already talked about, the, uh, after for protection.
Yeah.
Part of it there, and I think I had decided to go into five, six, seven, eight, I, one, but it doesn't fit there as well as fits in like ten, two, and again, we can go over that. But if it's better in a different place than the, uh, site plan rights. So we go over that too. So if that's what we can do, then we can move along to other businesses, maybe. And then also down to, to, to German, other business.
Well, I'm gonna throw a wrench in that a little bit. Um. Ever since we had our last meeting. I've been bothered by what we did as far as the landfill complex and. Approving something that we really didn't. Didn't have until that meeting. And are voting. To accept the same waivers. As originally set, uh, from July twenty-eighth. We do as a board have a right to go back and reconsider. Uh, those. And I think that's where we need to go. We received this project prior to the selection meeting. And I think that was, I think that's the wrong sequence, and we've had that discussion before. Concerning a project, and that was involved the zoning board, not the selectmen. It's just my feeling that. We need, where the zone, actually what was happening was the zoning board, excuse me, the selectmen were waiting for us to do something. And kinda give them guidance on what they, what they should do, that's my interpretation, but anyways, um. I, I, looking at the original proposal from July twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth. There's no fencing involved in the outfield. The parking is up on West Field. Uh, and there's parking between or behind lane fields where it is now in existence.
Oh, just, I know. I don't wanna interrupt you and bring you down, but, but this is a decision that was already voted on by the board and decided on by the board. We can't get into any specifics on something, it's not fair to the applicant or the public to get into specifics on a specific site plan that is already been approved by the board without. Calling a public hearing, we can't, we can't do that, if.
Yes.
So what we can do, or what anybody can do. If, if a rehearing is requested or wanted, you can, you can, any member of the board can, or anyone that has standing with that application, like one of the applicants or the abutters. Can, um, they can submit a motion for rehearing, which within twenty days, I think it is, or whatever it is, twenty days probably of the decision. And the motion states the reasons for the rehearing. And then the planning board can vote to decide to whether to reopen that public hearing or not, or have another rehearing. If they don't, and the, and there's still a problem, then it can be, um, appealed, the decision can be appealed to. And in this case, it would probably be appealed to the courts, because it wasn't an error that I'm thinking anyways, judgment by, uh, the planning board. Trying to interpret their own zoning regulations, it was an error, is what you're saying, that the planning board didn't follow its own rules, rules and procedures, which the planning board votes on by themselves, so. Again, it's not a ZVA issue there, the appeal would be to, um, the courts for that one, but. Again, that's, that's a procedure for doing that, and the, the RSA set up that procedure for that, just for, um, for discerning a plat, so that. Uh, every time you turn around, any of these plats at these boards and all these towns and stuff, approve or disapprove, maybe approve, wouldn't be subject to appeals time and time again. Uh, it would be, uh, they have, they have a word for it, I can't recall the word that they use in the, the regulations, but there is a word for that. But it has to do with, again, fairness to everyone involved, including the, the public, including the board and all that. As far as making a decision, so. So the, again, the, the timeline is like twenty days from when the decision's made, and it's only thirty days for, for a regular appeal, and again, that's made. State set that up, so there wouldn't be appeals after appeal after appeal through these decisions, so we can talk in general terms of it, but not just in specific.
According to, um, state regulation. That we have. The ability as a board to go back and change that or.
We do.
And my, my point is, and unfortunately, I'm the one that made the motion to accept the plat, this, the, the last meeting. And as I say, since that time, it's just bothered me that we really didn't take time to review the new plat thoroughly. And to really compare it to what was presented to us on the twenty-eighth. There are tremendous, there are a tremendous amount of change. From one to the newest one, and.
We can't go into specifics again on that, you know, but, but again, you're saying that the, the two plats were, were different, and they were different, but again, the entire board saw both plats, the entire board's, or itself, the updated flat, and voted on it accordingly.
But I guess my, my, my point, another point. We as a board also fairly recently. Uh. In majority, I believe, agreed with it, that something that is complex like this should be looked at, reviewed, and come back to next meeting. So we didn't follow our own.
We did follow our own, because. No, we asked them to come back with a better parking plan and a better.
Better parking plan.
Yeah.
But the parking plan is better true, but the field layouts are the difference. You're eliminating, uh, well, you eliminated a different field, you've added fencing throughout. You know, right now, what he wants to do is fencing through the, the entire outfield of, of, uh, O'Brien and Westfield.
Again, yeah, there are differences in the plan, but we cannot get too far into that, because we, it's, we're not allowed to do that without the public being here. Discussing that, and in, in order for that to happen, we have to notify, if we're gonna reopen a public hearing, something like that. We have to notify the abutters, alls, and who are involved originally, and, and then we can discuss it in detail.
Right, which, which we.
And, yeah, what do you?
Well, what I, you know, you kind of, kind of brought it up, but, um. It, it just says that, you know, we have the, uh. The ability to revisit. This.
We do.
As a board.
But does it say the procedure?
The, um. Request, you know, with agreement of the, uh, applicant and applicant successors, that's part of it.
But they have to be there, you need, can, I think you're talking about reopening the public, public hearing while the people are still there before everyone's.
It doesn't say that.
Doesn't.
No.
Say one way or the other, or it doesn't.
No, um. Different notification dated. If we can, we, we as a board. Uh, declare a revocation of the, of what we agree to. We have thirty days which to notify the applicant. That of our decision, and, you know.
But the process prior to that, how it's, just to say, the process prior to that, how it's brought up, I believe the process is a, a motion for rehearing that has to be filed for the specific. Reasons why a person, whoever it is wants to.
Yeah, we, we would have to state the reasons for it.
The person requesting, not the board doesn't, one person or someone has to request a rehearing, and they have to request specifically on what grounds they want to rehearing. And then the planning board votes as to whether they're gonna grant a rehearing or not, and if they, they vote in the affirmative, then everyone has sent out notices and all that, the business has brought it up again, if they vote no. Then the appeal goes to the courts, because you still believe within, you still have to be within that thirty day.
Yeah, you know, the, the court part, yes, you know, that, that, that sequence, you know, I understand, and, you know, in agreement with, but, um. I, I just think, I really think that we erred. In the approval with, on the, on the new thing without. What stating, I think we stated that because we approved the July twenty-second, the twenty-eighth.
It was the waivers, I think, is what you're.
Was, you know, with the waivers.
Yeah.
You know, that, okay, they, you know, they automatically carried over to the new plat, and I, I think that's where we made an error. And, and I think we should, you know, that should be, uh, revisited, and in order to do that, we've got to reopen.
Yeah, the only way to do that, I gotta state.
Um. If we are, if we are going to. Considering motion to reopen.
And we're talking just on any public hearing, we're talking about this specifically, we're talking about reopen a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
I do believe because of the thirty day time frame, that. For this particular hearing. Um. A special meeting should be called, so that we can comply with that requirement.
The thirty day applies to a court appeal, the twenty day applies to a reopening of a hearing.
I see, that's even more of a process.
Yeah, and it has to be, a motion has to be submitted, and we can find where it is in there, or I know I've read it, but.
It always reads out of six, seven, four, six, 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 seven, six, dash, four, always.
So, in order to call a special meeting, like what you're talking about, to, to decide on it, we have to have a motion in front of us to have a rehearing, and the motion has to be filed. It's gotta be on paper, it can't be just verbally filed, as far as I understand things, anyway, it's gotta be a specific motion, any motion, like in courts, whatever, it's a filed on paper motion. I want you to open up this public hearing, because I think we erred, you know, planning board erred on this, this, and this, and then the planning board hears it, decides on it one way or the other, and acts. Mike, what were you saying?
All of this is spelled out in six, seven, six, four, A, all the way down through. To six, seven, six, four, V, just all, all that stuff is explained on. There's nothing in there that I see that's a twenty day. Everything's thirty day. When you do that rehearing, it's actually a revocation of the, uh, what you just did. Of, of the pool you just did, so it's a revocation, and then you have, like Scott was saying, you have to notify everybody.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a rehearing. Does the select board ever saw that, K ship?
Been discussed at our level.
But you haven't made any decisions on it.
Well, we basically have said. Yes, I guess we have, because the, the fencing is gonna be looked at.
Are you discussing the ball field there?
You can't discuss, I just asked if they took.
You can ask him.
It's a general question, it wasn't a specific one.
It sounded like it was specific.
Well, he was giving you a specific answer.
Okay.
Okay, I was just, don't, don't, you just.
I won't. Sure.
Okay, in, in, under general provisions, uh, this is under six, seventy-seven, two, motion for rehearing, support of adjustment, board of appeals, and local legislative decisions. And I think the planning board would probably fall under that. It says, within twenty days after any order or decision of a, of the zoning board of adjustment, or any decision of the local legislative body, or a board of appeals in regard to its zoning. Has been filed and first becomes available for public inspection in the office of respect to the board or the body. Or this clerk or secretary, selectmen, any party to the action or proceedings, or any person directly affected thereby, may apply for a rehearing in respect to any matter determined. In the action or proceeding or covered or included in the order.
I'm sorry, excuse me for interrupting, but you're reading what's seventy-seven, two?
Yeah, two. It might be different.
Mine, mine says within thirty days.
Okay, they might have changed it then, I, I have an older book, you know, I got the old, uh, one there, so, under that six, seven, seven, two, they might have changed it within twenty days, so that wording's the same, but it's within thirty days, so anyways, you have thirty days. To.
That's what I read, thirty days.
Okay, define, and does it say file a re-motion, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we got thirty days filed, or anyone has thirty days to file the re-motion, but if that's a procedure we're gonna take, that's a procedure, or wanna do, that's what we have.
It's that thirty days from.
From the.
Date of a vote.
Of the.
What, or the date, for instance, today, when the minutes got approved.
No.
And then approved minutes get filed.
It's from the decision. It's from the vote, the decision. It is, and there's, there's more time, it's only, hasn't even been twenty.
Yeah.
How does that work when the?
This is a good time.
Okay, you, okay, you mainly, yeah.
You have a good one there.
Yeah, you too.
Get all that.
Needs to be a written filing, the next regular meeting is not until October thirteenth, which would be beyond thirty days.
The way I understand it, it can be filed in the land use office, and, and as long as it's filed within the thirty days, the planning board can do it at its next regular meeting.
Okay.
So. Doesn't apply that, apply it only to the file. So if, if we wanna do that, you can file, or anybody can, but you being a board member can file, especially since you made the motion, file something like that, a motion to rehear. And just state the grounds that you wanna rehear it on, the grounds that you think the planning board erred, and that's all that's getting there, but remember that. Whatever grounds you state are the only ones that.
That can be covered, so, yeah, we can reconsider.
Yeah.
Sarah, did you, is there anything that you can add to? What we're, what we're talking, a- as far as legalities or anything? Or am I putting you on the spot?
You're putting me on the spot.
Sorry.
I think. I think I have to read them.
Not. Call a town attorney.
What you can always do, and I have on occasion, not necessarily with planning board, but you can always call New Hampshire Municipal Association and ask to speak to an attorney.
Yeah.
And they.
Free, yeah.
Because.
And they'll help you with that.
What, what they also have is you have the land use board now, and not necessarily court. It's three.
Oh, yeah, the H A B.
Yeah, but you have to be careful when you talk to those people.
But she's just talking about an opinion, you're not talking about going up seeing.
Oh, no.
We're talking about designing it here.
You can get an opinion out of that, the head of that board is an attorney, the land use attorney.
Yeah.
He has stated that if you wanna call him for an opinion, you could. But it's probably best not to do that, just because if it came in front of him.
I see what you're saying, yeah, he'd already be privy to it.
He's the one that told you, we better be specific about our language on it.
I'm sorry, you talk about taking away local control, and then you.
Put that.
Somebody can give, give their opinion to the board and have them start taking care of it, and those people have probably, some of them never, they don't even know where Swan V is.
We see that, and that was my point about the local control, because what the governor did, he wrested that away from us, that was, the legislature actually voted that board down. But he snuck it in on his budget.
Well, I'm not gonna sit here and.
The things you learn when you're. So in order to proceed, then, I would have to make a motion this evening, or just.
No, it has to just file a written motion, it doesn't have to be anything fancy, just a written motion for a rehearing and state the, the reasons why. I want the rehearing filed by the office tomorrow or something, or emailing in, or whatever they can do, that gets it in before the deadline, then the board can take it up at a, at its regular next meeting. And we can get a little bit into specifics then, when we're discussing whether we're gonna do the motion or not. Uh, and then after that, it's decided the affirmative, then we'll have to notify the abutters and the applicants and all that type of stuff, and they'll have to come back and. That's how it should be.
We, we cannot discuss anything further concerning.
Not specific, in general, we can. Not, just not specific, like the fence shouldn't have been here, should have been over there, and all that.
Just for an FYI, temporary fencing for the analog regional twenty-year life expectancy.
And. We're doing that in regards to temporary fencing possibly at the other place.
Just, just, just for, just for an education. Sequence. Have you, um. I, I don't know, Sarah, the minutes from the selectmen's meeting up. I I don't know, Sarah, the minutes from the selectmen's meeting up.
Come on.
I'm not sure, I haven't looked yet.
I didn't see them today, so I was kind of checking myself.
You didn't.
I didn't see them today.
Can we discuss what was discussed at the selectmen's meeting?
If it's public knowledge in the.
Well, it's in the video.
We can discuss whatever is in the minutes of the meeting.
No, they didn't have. You know, it's the last weeks, okay, because the. Feeling that I have is that the selectman wants to ensure that that is maintained as a recreational area. Not specific to baseball. They are not really. Leaning towards permanent fence, they want, you know, I think they want to be temporary fence throughout the outfield. And and where it comes up, where the fields, the Westfield and O'Brien Field are common area after the dugouts. But there'd be temporary fencing in that area also. So the ball won't roll into the other field or whatever, but. That was the inter, the impression I received from them.
So if they did change that stuff, they'd be back in front of us anyway, wouldn't they? If anything's changed on the site plan.
Nineteen fourteen, selectmen's meeting.
They aren't, okay, well, and we aren't going to, I guess, discuss it too much, but if that were the case, and they had to change, they got to come in.
That's something I don't understand sometimes, because I've taken minutes for a lot of boards and committees and in public boards. I had to have my minutes in within five business days.
But Richard, if. Just lost my train of thought. You know, if if they're going to come in anyway. We'd only be looking at the specific things that they were to change on the site plan, so if you were to file your motion, we'd be able to look at the entire site. Okay, if you're going to file that motion, if you're, if you're going to count on them coming in anyways, just be aware that we would only be addressing probably just what has changed, not what was already. Okay, there was a rehearing.
Okay. I. I'm open to any other. Information about about this and and how, yeah.
I think it can only be general and procedural, we're discussing here, and you know, that's, that's the way I think we have to do it, and Sarah, would you check with our attorney tomorrow, or 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 a year early is convenient, it's just to make sure that that I'm sending us all on the proper track?
Yeah. You know, like, if the thirty days from what it's received by the land use office, for instance.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, you can ask him that, but it's, the thirty days goes from when the decision is made, oh, yeah, the motion is received there.
That's, you've got to be firm on that.
As long as the motion is received within that thirty days, the motion to rehear, then it doesn't matter if the planning board has to wait two weeks for another meeting, it's it's been received within that time, yeah, make, just make sure that's correct and petition was correct.
That has to be accurate, because it kicks off legal things with suspension of limitations.
In what regard?
Okay, you have so many days in which you can bring a lawsuit to challenge one of what's our decisions. And that is set by. When the decision is filed. Which is different from.
Are you sure about that? I think it's when.
Okay, appear or not, I'm talking about when it was in New York.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it was when it was filed. Which was very important to say, you know, was it the vote, or was it the piece of paper going into the clerk's office, which would have been the approval of the minutes tonight?
Well, we normally hold off on signing any plot after for thirty days until that.
Yeah.
Has exhausted itself, just in case someone wants to.
In a normal, in a normal course, doesn't come up, but if we're talking about rehearing.
That's why we wait, it's not because I forget to bring them back for you.
Well, we don't, you don't, yeah.
Because we wait, just in case someone wants to appeal a decision of our, you know, in that thirty day period they have. And then if it's appealed within that thirty day period, the courts might not get to it for six months. So again, which which makes it that you've got to file your appeal or rehearing within that thirty days there. Doesn't matter how long.
You got to hurry, but the court does.
Yeah, the court doesn't, but I mean, yeah, they, and they they do it on purpose, again, only give you thirty days, because for brevity, they they and decisiveness in in boards' decisions, they they don't want a bunch of stuff.
Building needs to know when you get married.
Exactly.
Because time is money.
And weather.
All right, is there anything else that we might want to discuss this evening? We've done the agenda. Got all that stuff. Anything else?
Make motion, re-adjourn.
Okay, motion by Richard, Richard to adjourn. Is there a second? Nobody second, we're just sitting here, second by Jane, turning for the discussion, and all those, they were indicating by saying, hi.
Hi.